Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the June 5th, 2024 regular scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. We thank you for your great love and your mercy. This morning, we thank you for our Hillsborough County employees that have recently retired. We thank you for the gifts and talents that you gave them. We thank you that they have used them to serve Hillsborough County. And we pray for them and their retirees from development services are Michael Jenkins from Fire Rescue, William Haynes, and Fleet Management Jeffrey Spiegel, and Head Start Edwin Askew, and Information Technology Services Lee Wegner, and Public Utilities Alan Parker, and Public Works Leslie Ford. We pray that they will have a long and healthy life and that you fulfill their hearts' desires. And this morning, we pray for the families and friends of Hillsborough County Fire Medic Lieutenant Stephen Haberlin, who recently passed. He served faithfully for 18 years. We pray for his family and friends. We ask you to give them a great peace that passes all understanding that only you can give, and we pray that. And we pray also this morning for this drug crisis that we have in our nation right now and even in our very own county. We pray that these drugs will be eradicated, fentanyl and all these drugs will be eradicated in Hillsborough County, in the state of Florida, and in our nation. And we pray for the families and friends that have lost loved ones from these horrific drugs. And we just pray and we thank you in advance, Lord. They will be eradicated, and we speak it and declare it in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you for that invocation, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. Good morning, everyone. This is a presentation that I look forward to every year. In fact, I think I've done it ever since its inception back in 2005. But it's our, the board's pleasure to present the 2024 Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award. The board established this award in 2005 to recognize the exemplary athletic, academic, and community service achievements of a high school baseball player or team in Hillsborough County. Those who win this award are sterling examples of drive and leadership, not just in their sport, but throughout their daily lives. Now, I want to introduce a very special guest. The namesake of the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award is a National Baseball Hall of Fame member, 12-time All-Star and a longtime resident who graduated from Plant High School and has coached at Wharton. Wade Boggs had an incredible 3,010 hits during his 18-year career in Major League Baseball. He played for the Boston Red Sox, New York Yankees, and the then Tampa Bay Devil Rays, where he finished his career. The Rays retired his number 12 in 2008 years ago. The Red Sox retired his number 26. We're proud to call him one of our own, and we're very pleased to have him with us this morning. Mr. Boggs, would you please join us? Wade, I just want to thank you for being here. Thank you for everything you do in the community, especially for everything you do for high school baseball, notably this award here. Will you please say a few words?
Good morning. First of all, I'd like to thank the county commissioners for allowing us time on their busy schedule to recognize these amazing young men. The 2024 class is once again exceptional. Cooper, Blaine, Demetrius, I couldn't be more proud if you were my own. Just looking at your resume, this is what the award's all about. I'd like to congratulate the parents for raising such fine young gentlemen that whatever your recipe is, you need to write a book because you've done an outstanding job. And to my committee, who each and every year, we give you the task of trying to find the diamonds in the rough, and your due diligence is amazing. I thank you so much, and this year's class is exceptional, and I couldn't be more proud. So let's give away some hardware. Thank you, Ken.
Now, I would like to mention the members of the selection committee who reviewed the nominations and recommended this year's honorees. I know we have some of the members here this morning. If you would please stand when I say your name. Got my good friend, Tampa City Councilman Charlie Miranda, Anthony Tony Bell, Ruben Cuesta. I want to thank you and all the other members for participating. Would you please give them a round of applause? Every year, the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award grows in prestige, thanks to the numerous talented high school baseball players we have in Hillsborough County. And Commissioner Owen just mentioned that two emerge in his district, so I know he's very proud of that. But this year, in addition to the overall winner, the committee once again selected two honorable mention recipients whom we'll now recognize. Will the following individuals please join me at the podium? Demetrius Pasalaris of Leto High School. You have Blaine Rowland and Coach Butch Valdez from Durant High School. Well, thank you. Good morning, and thank you for being here. We'll start with Demetrius Pasalaris. Demetrius was Leto's top pitcher his junior and senior years. This season, he had a 3-2 record with 55 strikeouts and 46 innings pitched and a 3.5 earned run average. The last two seasons combined, he recorded over 70 strikeouts. The team's captain and leader, Demetrius is a true scholar athlete possessing a never-ending thirst for knowledge. Demetrius had a cumulative grade point average of 7.5. He's a National Honor Society member and the top 10 in his class, a Susan Valdez Scholar, Anna Perez Foundation Scholar-Athlete, who earned an AA degree this year, a tremendous accomplishment for a high school senior. He achieved the principal honor roll all four years in high school and will attend Florida State. Demetrius has repeatedly demonstrated love for his community and a strong sense of social responsibility and commitment to service. He has volunteered at local food pantries, Relay for Life, beach cleanups, Feeding Tampa Bay, and helped with environmental restoration projects. Further, Demetrius respects his opponents on the field, inspires others with his ability to solve complex problems, and embraces diverse perspectives. Demetrius, congratulations on being named for 2024 Wade Boggs Honorable Mention. Great job, and please come up and say a few words. And I understand your coach had a sudden death in this family, so unfortunately, he couldn't be here, but our thoughts and prayers are with him. But would you please say a few words?
Good morning. Thank you for the committee members who nominated me and allowed me to receive this award today. Thank you to Coach Pizzo, who wasn't able to be here, but for putting me up for the award. Thank you to my teammates and my parents, and more specifically, my dad, who put me into baseball and took me to practices and games throughout all the years and continued to push me. And thank you to everybody that's been through this journey through high school and everything. Thank you.
And now Blaine Rowland. Blaine, who led it all four years at Durant, was an all-county in pitching and outfield last year. What really set him apart in his recently completed senior year was his leadership. He set the regular season hit record for the school, was 6-0 in 43 innings pitched with 73 strikeouts and a 1.46 earned run average while hitting 541, all incredible achievements. He drove in 25 runs and had two home runs. For his career at Durant, Blaine had a phenomenal 1.22 ERA with 14 wins, 143 innings pitched, and 192 strikeouts. A model young man, both on and off the field, with a strong work ethic. Blaine's focus and determination paid off with a baseball scholarship to the University of Florida. They got a good win yesterday, by the way, beat Oklahoma State. In the classroom, Blaine excelled by taking advanced AP and dual enrollment classes. He was a National Honor Society member and part of Durant's Honor Court, which recognizes students with GPAs over 4.0. His volunteer work includes assisting the librarian at a local elementary school, plant city friends in the park, which provides nutritious meals for the less fortunate, assisting at youth baseball camps, and mentoring younger players. Blaine's natural positive attitude is contagious, and his teammates always look to him for direction. He even became a JV coach at Durant. Blaine won an outstanding year in a career. You've headed Durant. Congratulations, and please say a few words.
Good morning. I'd like to thank, first of all, God for blessing me with every opportunity I got. I'd like to thank my parents and Coach Valdez for supporting me through high school so far. Thank you to all commissioners, and thank you to everyone who nominated me and chose me to be here. And congratulations, Cooper. I've played travel ball the past few years with Cooper. I can say he's one of the most hard-working teammates I've played with, and congratulations again. Thank you.
There you go, brother. Thank you. All right, man. There you go. All right. And now, will Cooper Henson and Coach Chris Wilken from Bloomingdale High School please come forward? The list of Cooper Henson's athletic accomplishments at Bloomingdale High is long and impressive. Two-time Perfect Game High School All-American, two-time All-Western Conference First Team, two-time Bloomingdale Hitter of the Year, Bloomingdale Baseball's Highest GPA Award, Hillsborough County Representatives in the Hillsborough Pinellas Senior All-Star Game, and USA Baseball Alumni. Cooper, who's been an exceptional athlete since his early years, is a dominant force on the field. He was a major cog in the Bloomingdale Baseball Machine the past two seasons, helping lead the team to 2023 District 6A Championship, the 2024 6A Regional Championship, and the 2024 Florida High School Athletic Association Final Four this past season. In this senior campaign, Cooper hit a whopping 448 with 39 hits, 34 runs scored, 19 RBIs, 10 doubles, and two home runs. All of these extraordinary successes clearly explain why he received a baseball scholarship to Marshall University, where he plans to pursue a law degree. Academically and community-wise, his achievements are equally impressive, a 5.84 GPA, four-year member of the National Honor Society, and Bloomingdale Booster Scholar-Athlete Award recipient. He has volunteered with Best Buddies and Meals on Wheels, and is a member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes and an officer in the Red Sea Club. In addition, Cooper co-founded the Bloomingdale Basketball and Whiffleball Leagues for students. His positive attitude, charismatic personality, and leadership skills have inspired his fellow teammates, making him an invaluable asset to the team. His talent, work ethic, and positive attitude make him a true inspiration to all those around him. Cooper's impressive athletic and academic record, coupled with his strong character and leadership skills, make him a strongly deserving recipient of the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award. He epitomizes the criteria that the award is designed to recognize excellence in all aspects of student athletes. Cooper, congratulations on becoming the 18th recipient of this outstanding award. Will you please come up and say a few words?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Hello. I want to start by thanking God for blessing me with the opportunity to stand at this podium today. I want to go on to thank Mr. Boggs and the committee for such a tight award and holding this ceremony today. It's a big deal, and I really appreciate it. I want to thank my mom, my dad, my family, and my girlfriend for being here today and always pushing me to my highest potential. I want to thank Coach Wilken, the rest of the Bloomingdale staff, and all my teammates for always pushing me on the field and always holding me accountable. I want to congratulate Blaine. I want to congratulate Demetrius, and I want to wish them luck in their careers, and they're great kids, and they deserve all of this. And that's all I got. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, once again, congratulations, each of you. I think Commissioner Owen wanted to...
Yeah, I just want to say a couple things. First, Wade, thank you for what you do, investing in our youth. It's something you don't have to do. You do it because you have a passion for youth sports. We really appreciate you, not just looking at the baseball side of it, also the academic side, what they put into this community. I think that's really important. And to you guys, you young guys, yes, two of these players are out of my district. I think District Four is becoming the Mecca for baseball. Butch, I've known for a long time. His father's one of my mentors, and you coaches have such a lasting impact. That's why you're a coach forever. And to you fine young men, I will say this to you, that you're going to go on to a next level, okay? And that next level is going to be much different than the level that you were just playing at, whether you go to college, whether you go play rookie ball. Your life's going to change a lot. And what I'll say is, we in this community, these people standing around you, we are all invested in you. We want you to go make us proud. So I'm really proud of you all. Thank you all. Go Bulls!
And I want to say, that comes from experience, from Commissioner Owen, Commissioner Owen and myself, both played a little college ball, so well-stated.
But Commissioner Hagan's much older than me, and I want to state that for the record.
I could say a lot right now. I won't. I'll be the mature commissioner in the room. But in closing, I want to, once again, I want to thank my friend Wade Boggs for everything he does in the community, not just with baseball and with this award, but I always see him out and about, supporting many charitable and philanthropic efforts. So thank you, Wade. And Wade pointed this out, but really, a special thank you, first of all, I want to thank the coaches for teaching these young men some of life's greatest lessons, both on and off the field. And as Wade said, a special thank you to the parents. As a parent of a high school athlete, I know the sacrifices that you make, and you give up a lot in order to help out and provide and do everything you can so these young men can play ball and learn some of life's greatest lessons. So special, thank you. And with that, we'll take a photo.
Thank you. Always a pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, mine too. Once again, congratulations to all the recipients, and I believe Commissioner Wostel will present the next accommodation.
While we're getting set up, would Wanda Broughton and Ellen Snelling, let me get your title, the Board Chair of the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance, please join me at the Good morning, and thank you for joining us. Cities and counties across the nation have dedicated themselves to fighting an epidemic that is killing countless numbers of people and destroying families. That epidemic is fentanyl addiction, which has been dramatically increasing with each passing year. What is truly frightening is how fentanyl is being distributed across the nation. According to the Drug Enforcement Agency, fentanyl can be manufactured with other illicit drugs to increase potency. It can be sold as a powder or mixed with other illicit drugs, and it can be pressed into counterfeit pills to look like legitimate pharmaceutical drugs. The good news is that Hillsborough County law enforcement agencies, the 13th Judicial Circuit, and all community partners, most notably the Hillsborough County Drug Alliance, are committed to raising awareness to how to combat and defeat the horrible epidemic. This proclamation, which I am honored to present to Ms. Snelling and Ms. Broughton, further illustrates Hillsborough County's dedication to its residents, especially those who fell victim to fentanyl. Normally, I would read the exact words of the proclamation, but I want to summarize it to allot the maximum amount of time to the two individuals that are speaking after me, because it's my opinion that their personal stories are much more important than what this proclamal is not just, it's not just a problem of addiction. You almost can't go to a Publix pharmacy at this point and not see Narcan sitting on the shelf. It's a contact drug that is intentionally synthetic to have the most potent effect on your cardiac system possible. This is much more than an addiction. This is now impacting childrens that are simply experimenting in the United States of America. And while that may itself have your own opinions, children don't deserve to die simply for experimenting with a drug because they didn't know that a synthetic opioid, 100 times stronger than a normal opioid, was laced into what they were trying. So I will close and say that now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare June 6th, 2024 as Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day in Hillsborough County, and encourages continued efforts to educate the public regarding the effects of fentanyl and explore ways to provide the community with resources to combat this public health crisis awarded the fifth day of June 2024. Before I turn over the mic to Mrs. Snelling, I would like to point out to those in the public that might not have seen the article that came out, that Sheriff Grady Judge, Sheriff Cronister, and Attorney General Ashley Moody recently arrested three traffickers that were tracked from deep Mexico through the California border, all the way to here in Hillsborough County, one living in Riverview, two south of them, illegal immigrants in Wyomama, that trafficked enough fentanyl to kill five million people. That is enough fentanyl to kill the population of Hillsborough County entirely three times over. This is a very serious issue, and I do believe that society needs to take it as such. So Ms. Snelling, thank you for the alliance and all that you've done. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'd like to say thank you so much to Commissioner Wostel and all the Board of County Commission for taking the time to bring our public's attention to this terrible public health epidemic. And like Commissioner Wostel just said, this is not the average type of drug. This drug is so much more potent than morphine and oxycodone, and just a small speck of it can kill. And the way that's being trafficked across the border, and coming from China, going to Mexico, coming into our country, and killing over 100,000 people across this country last year. And it has affected many of us in Hillsborough County personally, as myself. I'm the Board Chair of the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance. I have a daughter in recovery, and Dottie Groover-Skippa is also on the board. We both share something in common that, you know, I would rather not have share in common. We both have children, but we have one of our children that are battling addiction and in recovery. So that's the reason I joined the Anti-Drug Alliance, to get resources and to help other people. But I also, very, very sadly, lost my brother, my younger brother, 10 years younger than me, and lost him to fentanyl. He battled addiction, specifically oxycodone. He had a back injury. Back in the day, anyone who had an injury got oxycodone, became addicted. Then there was a crackdown on pill mills, went to heroin, in and out of treatment. He was trying, we were all trying to get him the help he needed. But addiction is a disease. It's really, really difficult to get people help. He was even in treatment, but I got a call late, it was in December 2016, from my sister-in-law, and she was crying, and she said, "We lost your brother." And they found him in his room, and he was already gone. There was nothing that could be done. He had relapsed, and he used some heroin, but had no idea that it had fentanyl in it. And that's the problem with fentanyl. A lot of people that use it have no idea. It's laced in almost everything now. It's in cocaine, it's in meth, it's in pills that people have no idea, like Xanax, Percocet, different pills that are manufactured, again, by the cartels, get into this country, looks exactly like a regular drug, and a child can just be experimenting and take one and lose their life. So again, I just really thank the county commission for taking the time and to get this out to the public on how dangerous this epidemic is. And I just want you to think about this number, 583. 583 brothers, sisters, daughters, sons, mothers, fathers were lost in Hillsborough County last year. That's terrible. We've got to do more about that. The number did come down slightly from the year before, so I feel like the efforts that the Anti-Drug Alliance, the Sheriff's Office, Tampa Police Department, all of us working together to try to stop this epidemic is helping, but we have such a long way to go. And I also wanted to say that I'm so sorry to Wanda. I know that she lost a loved one, and I feel like probably everyone in this room has someone who either has an addiction problem, or you either have a loss, or you know someone who has been lost to drugs. So again, thank you so much for bringing attention to fentanyl and for proclaiming June 6th as Fentanyl Awareness Day.
Ms. Broughton, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. There's nothing really that I can add that the commissioner didn't already say about the facts and how deadly this is. And yes, we did recently lose a grandson, but he didn't have an addiction problem. He was experimenting with drugs, and this is what we see with the teens. We see that they're targeted by these drug dealers who are lacing everything that you consider recreational drugs or party drugs with deadly fentanyl, and they're unsuspecting. They have no idea. My grandson purchased a small amount of cocaine. He had no idea that it was laced with fentanyl. He did the cocaine, and within five minutes, he was dead. And this is how it happens. If you've seen other sheriffs in other counties, they'll tell you, you know, this is deadly. When you take this, you die, and you die right there. This is how it works. We've all seen these pictures that they post up, the DEA pictures of the enlarged penny with the small little specks of, you know, a little powder, white powder. Two milligrams is all it takes to kill 20 people. It's deadly. It's lethal. It's the most deadly poison drug that has ever existed in this nation. I've been a nurse for over 35 years, certified in case management, certified in disability management. I've seen painkillers, I've seen people become addicted. I've told my children, my grandchildren of the dangers, nothing can prepare you, nothing. They don't prepare you for how deadly this fentanyl is, and we need to fight back, and we need to fight back now. We need to fight back strong. And I think that this proclamation and this declaration of Fentanyl Awareness Day is a really big step towards getting further resources that we need to combat this problem. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. And before we gather... And before we gather for our group photo, I would just, I, I had the privilege of meeting Dylan, her grandson, and having lunch with him impromptu while I was touring their farm. And my one and only memory of him, to give you an idea, was he was trying to convince his grandfather and grandmother that the mud all over his truck was not from him going too fast, and that he was not going mudding. And this is the type of challenge that we and our families and our young ones deal with, who are just innocent and entering life and never get that opportunity. It's stole from them, and it's fleeting. And, and any opportunity you have to educate anyone to, on the detrimental impacts of modern-day opioid synthetics is a chance that you might be able to save a life. So, but everybody, just please gather at the podium, and we'll take a photo. Anyone that's with the family that would like to join us for the photo is welcome. No pressure.
Thank you, Commissioner Wostel. Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. We have two off-the-agenda items by Commissioner Owen. The first one is Item F1. This is to adopt a resolution authorizing the placement of signs in Hillsborough County Wright's Way from June 14th through July 5th for the Catch the Spirit and Celebrate America 4th of July Festival at the Hillsborough County Fairgrounds. Item F2 is to approve an amendment to Rule 14 of the Board's Rules of Order, changing the curm- limit of proclamations accommodations to be presented in the boardroom. We have two items that have been deferred to a date to be determined. The first one is Item A5, which is to approve the First Amendment to the Agreement between Hillsborough County and Friends of the County Parks and Recreation Department, Inc. And Item A31, which is to select a ward and authorize negotiations with four of the highest-ranked and best-qualified firms for the opportunity to provide community development block grant-funded public services for the Affordable Housing Services Department. We have one correction to the agenda. This is an address for Item A3, which is to approve and execute a dual-source funding agreement between the county and Zion Village LLP and Adonai Second Chances, Inc., for 75-unit multifamily affordable senior housing community. The correct address is 5836 Zion Village Street in Riverview. We have one item for time certain, sorry, two. 10:00 AM is Item E1, which is a special appearance by Craig Richard, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Economic Development Council, to present their semi-annual activity report for 2024. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Cullen. Please accord your vote. Changes to the agenda?
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, the Board will go on the public comment portion of the agenda. Now, the Board welcomes comments from the citizens on any issue or concern. Your, your comments are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members, however, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board. The comments are not directed at board member or staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes this morning. The Chair will call on names in the order in which the requests to speak have been received. When you speak in front of the Board, please state your name and clearly under the microphone. Three minutes will be given to each speaker. The first three speakers are David Coleman, followed by Denise Herndon, and then Donald Hampton.
Good morning. My name is Dave Coleman, and on A2 and A3, I feel the county has sadly mistaken, given a dime to Catholic charities to provide anything for our homeless, especially mental health treatment. If you have any doubts about their inability, go visit Mercy Oaks and the Hope Tents in Ybor. As far as money for Zion to build 75 units, I ask why? We have 600 elders living in a food-desert squalor at the Housing Authority JL Young Facility. Start funding real projects. I will start with last meeting's ending, as I was cut off to two minutes. No home at all for Palestinians living there for 4,000 years, or no home for Jews who have roots going back 4,000 years. The only answer is peace. Gassing and beating protesters asking for peace is now normalized by Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office and TPD. No effort to peacefully arrest those 50 people, just simply attack with violence on our USF campus. Is this really the road you want for Hillsborough? The UN lowered its body count last week, down to 8,000 children and 5,000 women. Anyone quoting this and finding solace should seriously evaluate their relationship with the Ohio Power. Since then, the UN retracted that statement. I end with a quote, "We thought the first days were the worst, then we thought the starvation was the worst, but this bombing is like nothing we've seen. Today alone, Jabalaya Refugee Camp was bombed at least 100 times." That was a quote from Hassan Shabat. As community members concluded, the request to vote "no" on 25 million for Israel, they were basically called anti-Semites. Calling for peace is no such thing. At a recent town hall, approximately 14 Muslim and non-Muslim attended, waited and quietly lined up as instructed to ask questions. After one question, they were ordered out by police, that said it was a private venue. A similar event happened years ago when an individual was denied their right to free speech. According to the Times, this board was ordered to let her and her lawyer speak and pay $25,000 in restitution. You also had Humira removed instead of just asking her to sit down at the last meeting. I demand, as the court cases begin to come forward against you, that this board take a stand against gassing students that easily could have been peacefully arrested, that, as I have asked in the past, that public meetings be recorded and accessible. Last night at the flu meeting, I was denied access. I'm really demanding that there be a, a commission to investigate this entire board and their actions for the past year that I've been here. You're going to start acting like you represent people that live in Hillsborough, even though we know you don't mean it. Oh, and cut all the red tape, open the $2.3 million piggy bank, and open the pool up itself as springs.
Appreciate your comments, sir. Denise Herndon, followed by Donald Hampton, and then Karen Jackson Sims. Good morning, Ms. Herndon.
Good morning. My name is Denise Herndon. I've been having quite a few issues with Hillsborough County going, Sheriff's Department going back quite a ways. This detective here is supposed to change some reports in this shooting for this incident in February of 2021. I call him, and the only thing he says that I can do is change, I was a witness, and there's information in this police report dating back to 2015. Why is that? There's a lot of false information in this. There's issues that I have with the body cams also, because there's some things that aren't right in it. There's something going on in the Sheriff's Department. Back in late 2021 or early '22, I tried having an appointment with Sheriff Cronister. He has refused to speak with me. There's a lot of issues going on. This isn't the only one. Sherlene Hammond had called and filed a false police report. This is another police report that has a lot of false information in it. It says, "From the deputy, false information in here. I had signs written on my house concerning Sherlene Hammond. Sherlene Hammond has been in the dark web since '96 that I know of, when she was my son's school bus driver and drugged my son. And lo and behold, 10 years after I've been in my home, she becomes my neighbor. She's the one who told me she was my son's school bus driver." There's a lot of issues going on, and I'm a persistent little piss. And Sheriff Cronister, you've got a problem in your department, and it goes all the way down to your body cams and your recording. There's stuff on the agenda today for the computerized, because everything is computerized, and everything can be hacked into. Something has to stop with this. And going on about the fentanyl, our doctors and pharmaceutical companies and joint commission who accredited hospitals are to blame in this, too. And why aren't they being prosecuted when you have to demand from every patient, "We want a pain scale, 1 to 10, 10 being the worst pain. If somebody doesn't have high blood pressure, they do not have a blood, or a pain scale of 10." So let's put the blame where it really goes. And the real problem also with this fentanyl, Narcan isn't working with it. Everyone has had issues, I have had issues knowing stuff, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Donald Hampton, followed by Karen Jackson Sims, and then Mary Margaret Hall. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, President. Good morning, Commissioner Mead. My name is Don Hampton. I live in Wyomama. I'd like to thank all of you today. I want to talk about A3. You've been working with the Reverend Karen Sims and Mount Zion AME Church and the community on Zion Village, where we have 75 senior apartments. I hope today that you vote "yes," because as a senior, and I'm very fortunate, I don't need senior apartment, but in our community, so many do. They need affordable housing, and here's this opportunity for you to help 75 families or 75 individuals in their golden years to live a good life in our country. We helped in Israel, we need to help folks here. Let's do this. And this is just to be a start of throughout the whole Hillsborough County of helping everybody. Some of these people back here, I'm sure, they hope they never need a senior apartment. But we know things happen in our lives that change us and our living status every day. So I'm hoping today you vote "yes," because I think it's a great project, and it needs to be taken care of, so we can get it started now. Because I know in other meetings I've attended, we talked about the homeless. We don't need seniors to be homeless. They've helped all of us get to be where we are today, and we need to make sure that we take pride in them and appreciate them for their wisdom and the hard work that they've done for the contribution to this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Karen Jackson Sims, followed by Mary Margaret Hall, and then a Humira Absel. Good morning.
Someone left their cell phone here. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and to our County Administrator, I come to you to speak on A3 today. First and foremost, to thank you for the opportunity to be able to address the affordable housing issues within Hillsborough County. I do serve on your Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and we are well aware that the fastest-growing rate of homelessness within Hillsborough County is our elderly population. And several of our units in the proposed development have been set aside for homeless senior citizens. At Mount Zion AME Church of Riverview, we have had several seniors who are homeless that have been sleeping on the grounds at Mount Zion. We have a need for this housing, and we thank you for your prior support of the project and look forward to your continued support of the project. As collectively as a community, we strive to address the problems of affordable housing and homelessness in Hillsborough County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Margaret Hall, followed by Humira Absel, and then a Brooke Ward. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Mary Margaret Hall. I live in Lutes, Florida, so I'm in Mr. Hagan's district. I serve as the Vice Chair of the Hillsborough Greenways and Trails Committee. I want to talk briefly about Item A4 on your consent agenda, share a little story. So I did my undergraduate studies at a small school in Winter Park, Florida, where I first learned about greenways, interconnected systems in the city of Portland, a great vision connecting parks, community centers, schools, cultural areas, natural spaces. And that's exactly what the updated Hillsborough Greenways Master Plan does. I later graduated from college, moved to the city of Tampa, got a job again back in 1994, was involved with the original development of the first Hillsborough Greenways Master Plan, which the Board approved back in 1995. So yes, I've been around a long, long time, moved back to Hillsborough County in 2012, got involved with the committee again. So I'm absolutely delighted to see this master plan update coming before you today as a consent item, has a lot of great value, will hopefully bring some potential opportunities for grants in the future to really begin constructing some of those trails in Hillsborough County. I'm an avid triathlete, cyclist, and runner. I do a lot of races around the country. I have lots of friends that are into sports tourism, and there's lots of opportunities that can be found by implementing and developing some of those trail systems. I recently did the St. Anthony's Triathlon in downtown St. Pete. Super fun, spent the weekend there, got a hotel, had dinner a few times, breakfast a few times, did some shopping. And there must have been 4,000 athletes. It's a global draw, global triathletes from around the world come and do that for the pro race. Lots of fun. I would love to see Hillsborough County developing a venue for triathlon in the future. So with that, I'd love to be able to stay in the county to do my long rides. Currently, I do a lot of my longer rides at Flatwoods and New Tampa, just because it's close. But you're going around four and five times, around a seven-mile loop, to get a 35 or 40-mile bike ride in. It gets a little monotonous, and it's quite crowded out there, which is great. Folks are getting out there, enjoying Hillsborough County's natural areas. But when you're going speeds of 18 to 20 miles an hour, it's really nice to have a wider space with longer trails, like the Sun Coast Trail, running, you know, you can connect from Upper Tampa Bay Park through Pasco, Hernando, now up into Citrus County. And the With the Coochie Trail is 50 miles, running from Hernando all the way up to Citrus County. So there's lots of opportunities in that master plan update. I look forward to your continued support for developing and constructing trails in the future. Thank you for serving the citizens of Hillsborough County, and I very much appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, for your comments and for your service on the Greenways Committee.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it. Humira Absel, then a Brooke Ward, and Isabella Muller. Good morning.
Hi. First, I'd like to encourage you to approve Item A3 for Zion Village. This county desperately needs more affordable senior housing. Moving on. A lot has happened since you voted 6 to 1 last meeting to change county ordinance so you can invest our taxpayer dollars in Israel. The ICC announced that it will seek arrest warrants for Netanyahu and his Defense Minister for war crimes. I hope you're hiring an expert on international law. Israel's war bill is now at 13% of its GDP, so it continues to fund the genocide on Gaza with debt financing by selling Israel bonds. Pay a special attention to this one. On May 22nd, residents of Palm Beach County filed a lawsuit against the county comptroller and the clerk of the circuit court for violating his fiduciary duty by investing $660 million of local tax revenues in Israel. He called it a show of support for Israel, which means he violated a Florida statute which mandates that local governments make investment decisions based solely on pecuniary factors and may not subordinate the interests of the people of this state to other objectives. By passing that ordinance, you subordinated the interest of Hillsborough County to your interest in helping Israel. You are too preoccupied playing politics with taxpayer dollars to realize that you're being suckered into accepting below-market returns on risky investments. While local governments are buying Israel bonds in conventional sales, Wall Street is charging Israel additional fees to cover the added risk. They're making back-room private placement deals that allow Israel to avoid having to write an updated bond prospectus. Israel would rather pay $100 million in placement fees to Bank of America and Goldman Sachs than have to disclose the reality of its current economic and political difficulties. But our County Commission thinks it's a good idea to invest in Israel. Public sentiment is also overwhelmingly against it. Over 50 people spoke against the ordinance during the hearing. They outnumbered those supporting it by 5 to 1. You received over 300 emails against it, and only a few in favor. Yet you still voted 6 to 1 to pass it. Four of you who voted "yes" didn't even bother to acknowledge the public opposition. The other two slandered speakers as anti-Semitic. I watched from the- I watched from the lobby after getting escorted out by a deputy, and none of the speakers were anti-Semitic. What I heard was a lot of people saying that it'd be a financially irresponsible and illegal investment and that they don't want their taxpayer dollars funding genocide. Refusing to listen to constituents is a pattern of behavior here. Some of you refuse to let constituents ask questions at public town halls. Town halls are not privately funded campaign events where you get to make sure that you're not asked tough questions. A town hall last week was suddenly called a private event, and a commissioner instructed deputies to remove 13 people who had been waiting to ask questions. You can't suddenly call a public town hall a private event when you want an excuse to kick out constituents. And then you have the audacity to post on social media that you, quote, "continue to bring the county to your community," so you have an opportunity to speak with them, to speak with me. You forgot to add the part about gleefully having some of your constituents ejected from the building.
Thank you, Ms. Absal. Next three speakers, Brooke Ward, followed by Isabella Moller and Josie Ficki. Good morning.
Good morning, county commissioners, and thank you for having this time where we can have public comment to bring forward these issues. My name is Brooke Ward. I am the Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch, but I'm also part of the larger Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition that represents 12,000 of your constituents and is growing every day. I'm here today to extend an invitation. Next week, as I'm sure you all know, the Public Service Commission is having an in-district hearing for Tampa Electric's petition for rate increase. That will be happening on Thursday, June 13, at 10:00 a.m. Hillsborough families will be gathering at that event to express our concerns about the current rate increase request. Two weeks ago, right after this board met, Amera, the company that owns Tampa Electric, had a shareholder meeting where they bragged that Tampa Electric is providing 64% of their revenue, although Tampa Electric only makes up 35% of their customer base. In this current rate request, they are asking to increase the amount of profit that they make off of Tampa families and Hillsborough families to one of the highest percentages in the country, to 11.5%, when the national average is only 9.71%. Let that sink in. This is not a company that is providing energy at an affordable rate. This is a company that's price gouging and bragging about it. Be on the right side of history. Please come and stand with your constituents and oppose these profit-driven rate hikes. Are you standing with a corporation that has a monopoly and we have no choice of where to get our energy? Or are you standing with the people who voted you into office, could vote you out of office, who pay your salaries and in turn pay your utility bills? So think about it. The invitation is open. We won't hold anything against you that you haven't stood with us so far. Our doors are wide open. Come, join us. Y'all got my information. Feel free to reach out to me. I'm a really nice person. I'd love to talk to you, and I invite you to come with us, and we will celebrate you and talk about how you are just one of the best folks in Hillsborough County to represent your people and push back against something that families are struggling with. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you there. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Isabella Moller, then Josie Ficki, and Julie McGill. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Isabella Moller, and I'm a USF student and an intern with Food and Water Watch. I'm also here today to ask for your help to fight the profit-driven rate hikes on our electricity bills. TECO plans to increase their rates in the coming year, further burdening local residents with higher energy costs and exacerbating the financial strain many are already experiencing. As a resident of Florida and a college student living off campus, I understand firsthand the financial challenges that escalating utility bills impose on individuals and families. Financing my education independently, rising energy bills significantly impact my ability to afford basic necessities and pursue my academic goals. TECO has been increasing rates at twice the rate of inflation and is now seeking another hike to boost return on equity for their shareholders. These rate increases are clearly unnecessary and reflect corporate greed, prioritizing profit over the well-being of hard-working individuals and families. It is disheartening to see that some county commissioners have not voiced opposition to these rate hikes, seemingly indifferent to the hardships faced by Hillsborough County residents. Why is this happening? You are elected by and accountable to the residents of Hillsborough County, who are also paying your electricity bills. Residents are unhappy with these rate hikes, and your support for TECO's agenda is damaging your reputation with your constituents. I urge you to consider the needs of those who voted you into office and embody the role of a county commissioner, a civil servant dedicated to protecting and improving the lives of your constituents. Therefore, I implore you to use your influence to join us at the in-district PSC hearing next week and oppose these profit-driven rate hikes. It is imperative that we prioritize the financial well-being of our communities and prevent large corporations like TECO from unnecessarily offloading costs on to rate pairs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Josie Ficki, followed by Julie McGill, and then Yvette Neiman. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I would like to let the people know that's here that's concerned about TECO. They should probably investigate the donations that TECO makes to our elected officials, and you will see why nothing's being done. Second off, commissioners, I came to you last month, and it was denied, I was denied speaking time by my chair, so I've returned today to inform you of not just my concerns, but many concerns in the community. As a community leader and activist, I believe it is important to have an open line of communication with our elected officials. I've attempted to call, email, and message, and even went to a town hall meeting and was called to, a cop was called to squirt me out by my own commissioner, because he didn't want to answer questions. So it wasn't just the Muslims, it was everyone who had a question for this commissioner. Okay? I've even attempted to address it with said commissioner at the town hall, and it turned out to be nothing more than a photo op for him, as other people were asked to leave when they had questions. So I come to you today to make it, make it public, as I was told to tell everybody by this commissioner. So I'm coming to inform you, the sitting board, that we believe a county commissioner is using his entrusted power and taxpayers' dollars to target political opponents of his and his friends. We believe he is using his entrusted power and taxpayers' dollars to target the political opponents, and this is a direct violation of Florida State statute, which is a potential abuse of power by an elected official in violation. The Florida statute is 112.3136. Here are the examples of his meddling. Number one, he called the HREC, Hillsborough County Executive Committee, and tried to get our committee chair to interrogate a candidate running against Leila Collins. Number two, he's used his entrusted power to call Tammy Zerla, the Hillsborough County Fire Marshal, to target Matt the Welder's first location of his kickoff campaign. And again, this past weekend, she was also used to try and attempt to shut down his second kickoff campaign. I hope you all can address this issue now that you've been informed publicly, and I'm publicly informing everyone, including the general public, of the meddling of this commissioner. And I hope you guys decide to investigate and address District 4 Commissioner Michael Owens. I say thank you to you all.
Next three speakers, Julie McGill, followed by Yvette Neiman, and James Pete Floyd.
You all can make a public records request to find out all of that information.
Is Ms. McGill present?
No, she's not.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yvette Neiman, followed by James Pete Floyd, and then George Neiman.
Good morning, commissioners. Yvette Neiman, East Hillsborough County. I'm here today to ask you to vote no to plan amendments CPA 2315 and CPA 2406 when they come up for review. The EIP, Energy Industrial Park, had promised to build a clean alternative energy plant in 2010. In return, they would be allowed to build industrial and commercial. The energy plants never happened. Now here we are, 14 years later, and the owners want to amend the agreement to allow a percentage of the industrial and commercial first, with no commitment to ever build the energy facilities. I say stick to the original plan, deliver what you originally said you would deliver. In addition, the owners of the EIP want the county to drop the residential housing ban and allow them to build a huge 1900-home residential and retail development near the former phosphate mine, Superfund Toxic Waste Site. There are contaminants on that land. It is frightening to think of what the safety and health impacts could be for those people living and working on a former phosphate mine might be. I live in Dover Woods, where the former phosphate mines are, and I can tell you that every single resident in my subdivision is adamantly against this, and so is every resident in the neighboring subdivisions surrounding us. No one is in favor of this, and they're afraid of what this development will bring to this quiet, serene neighborhood. Thank you for your time. Please vote no on these amendments.
Thank you. James Pete Floyd, followed by our last one, George Neiman. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I appreciate it. Thank you. My name is James Floyd. I live in Dover, Florida, and I'm here this morning also to share my concerns about two comprehensive plan amendments that are currently under review. The numbers are CPA 23-15 and CPA 2406. These amendments involve key changes to the plan for the Energy Industrial Park in Dover. I live very close to the Sidney Phosphate Mine, which is now called the Energy Industrial Park, or EIP. I'm opposed to both plan amendments, and here's why. The proposed changes would be intolerable for our surrounding community. Our infrastructure can't handle the scope of what's being proposed. They want to build 1,900 homes on land that had formerly been mined for phosphate. Are you familiar with the Drummond Company and the lawsuit in Polk County a few years ago, which residents filed suit for exposure to radiations, radiation exposure in homes built on former phosphate mine land? Hillsborough County and the owners of the EIP should have deep pockets to fight this litigation. This is an accident waiting to happen. Previous commissioners have shown prudence in banning residential on the Sidney Mine site. I urge you to show the same care and wisdom and reject both of these amendments. Both would pose serious issues and tremendous impacts to both new and existing residences. Please defy plan amendments CPA 2315 and CPA 2406. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. George Neiman, our final speaker. Morning, Mr. Neiman.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. George Neiman, Dover, Florida. I'm here today to share concerns about the proposed changes for the Energy Industrial Park. The applicants are attempting to entirely rewrite the comprehensive plan approved back in 2010. By the way, your colleagues back then came up with a well-thought-out plan. The owners of the former phosphate mine proposed taking a contaminated mine and turning it into something more productive. They said they would produce clean alternative energy and fulfill a future need as Hillsborough grows. It made a lot of sense to the county leaders at that time. It was a well-thought-out plan because they knew you had to acquire the energy source to be built prior to anything else, just to keep all the players focused on an energy park producing energy. Here we are, 14 years later, and the owners who had proposed the plan in the first place haven't done a thing. So now they've hired the top guns of Hillsborough County's land development law machine to represent them in proposing that the energy production first commitment should be replaced with the strip mall manufacturing, fuel storage, and everything else first plan. So here's the big question. Do you really think that if you were to let them build all the non-energy development first with no commitment to even build any energy, that you'd ever actually receive an energy source? I think you are all a lot smarter than that, so please exercise care and prudence, and let's not put people at risk by populating and putting residential on a former phosphate mine. And by the way, they, they've admitted that they haven't really tested most of the 3,000 acres where they want to build everything. All that's been focused on is the Superfund Site, which we all understand, there's a lot of data associated with that, it's being monitored. But when we asked them, have you tested anywhere else outside of the 47 acres that are the buffer around it? They said, no, why would we do that? Well, we would if we're going to put thousands of people living and working on a former phosphate mine. Thank you.
That closes public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent? Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second. Commissioner Myers, I believe. No comments. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Neiman? Motion, Perry, 7 to 0.
All right, bonnie, we have a 10 o'clock time, sir.
Yes, our first item is 10 o'clock. It is item E1. This is a special appearance by Craig Richard, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Economic Development Council, to present their semi-annual activity report for 2024.
Morning, Mr. Richard.
Morning, commissioners. I'm Craig Richard, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Economic Development Council, and I have the honor to present our biannual report to the Commissioners' Court. And I promise you, it'll be brief, share some successes with you, and just want to thank you all for your continued support and partnership with the EDC. Now, where's the PowerPoint? How do I get the PowerPoint up here? I don't think that's it. I can't speak to streets and road grants.
I don't think we have the, do you have?
I will do it the old-fashioned way. How about that? No PowerPoint, just me charming you up here. So the first thing I want to tell you a little bit about is our business development efforts. So this report is over the last two quarters, and over the last two quarters, we brought in another eight projects to Hillsborough County. Four of those projects were expansions of some of our local companies. Three of those were actually international companies, companies like Inovis Medical, MUFG, and America Industrial Guide. One of the things I want to note about some of our international companies and the success that we're having with international projects, nearly 50% of the new leads that we've generated this year came from international sources. So I want to say that Hillsborough County and Tampa is definitely on the international radar. We see continued success in our international efforts and initiatives, and we're excited about being able to do that. So of the eight, the eight projects represent a goal of about, of our 22 projects, and in fact, we've had another three projects since the end of this particular report. So we're really at about 11 projects this year. We have a goal also of 1.7 million in non-government funding. We're at 1.62, which means we're about 92% of our own private funding that supports economic development efforts. Of those eight projects that we mentioned, this represents about $55 million in new capital investment to capital investment to Hillsborough County. And those projects represent wages of about $80,000 per job. Now, just to give you some reference, the county's average wage is right around $68, almost $70,000. So these wages are above the average wage for the county, and that's frankly the recipe to creating economic prosperity in the community. We had the opportunity to bring in and tour four site selection consultants this past quarter. Site selection consultants are the consultants that businesses hire to help them be guided through the site selection process. This is where they evaluate numbers of communities throughout the country, sometimes internationally, and we're in competition at that point. So we took them on a tour of Hillsborough County. We showed them many of our new developments. We talked about, you know, some of the Riverwalk assets. We had a chance to tour some of our sites, whether it's greenfield sites, industrial sites, as well as office building, new office development. And, you know, I just want to say that even though people know Florida, they don't know your community. So it's important that we get the people that's making these decisions here on the ground to kind of give a tour of what we do and what we're about and all the new exciting momentum that we have right now. While they were here, we actually had them sit on a panel, and we invited our investors to listen to them give a real in-depth presentation about the site selection process, everything from what it takes to make the decision to what happens after the decision and some of the factors that influence that decision. While a lot of the news and attention is given to companies that have been recruited to the community, the vast majority of the jobs that are being created in our community are from local companies, local companies growing and expanding. So part of our business retention and expansion program includes being able to go and survey these businesses, and we asked them a ton of questions. I'm going to summarize some of those results today. We had about 57 companies that participated in this last survey. Of that 57, over half reported that they are increasing sales, and I'm pleased to say that over half, about 52%, 53% reported increasing employment over the past year. So that increased sales, increased employment, those are good economic indicators for our county. Now, the common challenge that they've had, about 21% of them reported hiring challenges. So that continues to be something that we have to work with our local employers with, identifying workforce training opportunities to help upskill the current labor that's out there, to help them benefit from the economic opportunities that are being created through some of these business expansions. I guess maybe a little prior to the pandemic, the county approved a program that is a collaboration between Visit Tampa Bay and the EDC. It's called Make It Tampa Bay. It's a campaign geared towards attracting young, talented professionals to our community to take advantage of the professional jobs that are being brought to town. And this past, this past year, we've been working with Visit Tampa Bay to create targeted campaigns in the following markets: New York, Boston, Chicago, Dallas, and DC, because we wanted to add some capacity for the new jobs that are being created in cybersecurity, finance, and healthcare. The bulk of this campaign is going to run through June, and it'll have social media advertising, as well as a mix of media channels, including video and office buildings, coworking spaces, connected TV programming, and podcasts. This is really important because this allows us to be flexible and attract the type of talent that we're creating jobs for. And again, it's a holistic approach to economic development, talking about upskilling our current employees here, and we're talking about bringing in the type of talent that can help fuel the business growth that's occurring here in the county. And I just really want to sincerely thank you, the Commissioners' Court, for approving this program several years ago. It's paying great dividends for us. Thank you. At this point, I was supposed to show you a video of it, but, you know, we don't have that, so. Another thing that we're involved in now is community development, and part of our community development includes the working with TGH to promote Tampa as a healthcare destination. And this is part of our Tampa Medical and Research District Initiative, and we've convened an impressive group of local businessmen and women to sit on an advisory panel that will help guide our efforts. We've hosted several site visits within the district, and some of those site selection consultants that I referenced earlier had a chance to tour the district. They toured USF Health, talked about our research capabilities there, and so we're really fired up about that. I want to thank Commissioner Cohen for attending a session last night at Carlton Fields where we described what this district is and what we hope to do with it. The next step for us is creating some marketing plans, some brand standards, a website for the district, and of course, continue our business development efforts. One of the things that's not in your report, but that's happening as we speak, we have a business development manager in San Jose meeting 12 companies to discuss the Tampa Medical Research District and the opportunities that it presents. And then finally, this past, this past quarter, we were reaccredited as an accredited economic development organization. And this, this is an AEDO process that occurs through the International Economic Development Council. We're one of 80 economic development organizations that have achieved this accreditation, so we're kind of in rare air. And again, I want to thank the county for supporting us through that effort. Again, Commissioner Cohen was at one of our dinners that we hosted the accreditation committee, and I'm pleased to say that we passed with flying colors. So again, another three years of accreditation for your EDC. And then lastly, I just want to thank you all again for just being such great partners with us. Anytime we've needed support from Chairman Hagan, he's been there to help guide us and direct us, participating in many of the events and activities that we've had a chance to embark upon, and without your support, we couldn't continue to foster economic prosperity within our county. And it, again, economic development is a team sport, and it takes the private sector and the public sector working together to make it happen. So again, thank you so much for that. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Craig, I don't see any questions, but I just want to, I want to thank you for the presentation and all of you and your team's efforts to, you know, expand our economic development opportunities here in Hillsborough County. I know that you don't have the state support anymore that we used to have, so I know it's critically important that locally, not only the public sector, the private sector weighs in, and I appreciate you sharing the private sector support that you have. Keep up the great work, and also a great tie. I've got the exact same tie.
I wonder why, is it because of the UF colors, maybe?
But I see Commissioner Cohen, I think he wanted me to comment.
Thank you. You know, I wanted to, so I attended this panel discussion last night to learn a little bit more about the collaborative efforts that are being made to really market the whole medical district that is now really sprouting up between Tampa General Hospital and USF Health and everything around it. And I really was, I have to tell you, I was really struck by how much progress you all have made in the last couple of years in really attracting a huge new component to our entire central business district. And I know that there's some things that are actually on the agenda right now that are sort of coming out of the ground, and it just, can you talk a little bit about that, about some of just what you covered last night, very briefly, about what's happening to the whole physical area?
Well, I want to give a lot of credit to John Kuris, President of TGH, and he had this vision years ago. John originated from Boston, where there's the Longwood Medical District. My previous economic development experience, I was in Houston, where you have the Texas Medical Center. So after listening to his vision about how Tampa and Hillsborough County already has many of the assets needed to be a medical district, why don't we get together, work closely and collaboratively together to promote Tampa and Hillsborough County as a destination for healthcare, world-class healthcare and research? And I thought, it makes perfectly good sense. I mean, when you think about the research institutions that we have, University of Tampa, University of South Florida, Florida Polytech, all this research is being done here. What can we do to capitalize on that research and generate momentum for us to be recognized as a destination for healthcare and innovation? So just in short order, as Commissioner Cohen said, we started putting the pieces together on what it's going to take to do something like that. And so we've hired a Director of Healthcare and Life Sciences, who I just referenced, is in San Jose, marketing Tampa as this destination. We've been talking about, we've been already working with different companies, explaining the assets that we have, like Camels and USF Health, and it really is about teamwork, trying to promote and tell entities that would benefit from these assets to locate here. And so we're making progress, there's more progress to be made, we're working on a marketing plan that's going to help coordinate all of this, and fortunately, TGH has a marketing machine that we'll be able to tap into for that. So I'm excited about, there's more to come, and as we get more information available, I'll be happy to share it with the court as well.
And also, you know, a ton of integration with HCC.
Oh, yes.
Beater for this effort, so.
Yeah, talent is going to be an important component to all of that, so working with all of our educational institutions, including the public school system, is going to be important for us to be successful in this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
Thank you. Y'all have a great day. Thanks.
Okay, Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. And now we can move to the regular agenda. The first item is Item B1. This is to approve a 2024 budget amendment resolution. This is regarding some Safe Streets and some improvements and some federal and state funds that we are receiving. Item B1 is to be presented by Kim Byer.
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Byer, Assistant County Administrator of Public Works Administration. Commissioners, today we are highlighting some great news. Item B1 is a budget amendment that's associated with $19,716 grant received by the federal government. This grant will improve safety for pedestrians, bicycle transit, and vehicle users at 22 locations throughout Hillsborough County. This project will implement low-cost, proven safety measures, such as sidewalk, leading pedestrian intervals, crosswalk improvements, bike lanes, and speed management strategies, in addition to making safety improvements along our Vision Zero corridor. The Safe Streets for All Grant Program was created as part of the federal bipartisan infrastructure law in 2021. It allocated $5 billion over five years, and we rewarded $19.7 million as part of that 2022 application cycle. In addition, we were awarded $9.8 million in the 2023 application cycle. This is an item you'll see before you later on this year about this award. The goal of the grant is to reduce several severe and fatal roadway injuries. And why is this grant so important to us in Hillsborough Counties? Because we experienced the largest per capita traffic-related deaths among large counties in the United States. And we're going to use this money to utilize this money to improve pedestrian safe crossing locations, improve vehicle safety through resurfacing roadways, enhance pedestrian safety, and safe access to transit stops in underserved areas, in addition to improving safety for schools by providing buffers, buffered sidewalks for safety. Those 22 projects, of those 22 projects, six of those are our safe routes to schools. In addition, three are, address our safe routes to transit stops. We have eight corridor preservation, corridor safety projects, and we'll be addressing safety in five of our high-injury corridors with this grant funding. This map just is a map of the location, the 22 locations, and as they are distributed throughout the county. And just to summarize this, the total grant agreement is $28,940, of which the federal funding that we're speaking of today is $19,716,000. The county match is $7,964,000, and of that, it's funded through the countywide transportation fund and mobility fees through three mobility fee districts. And we did receive state funding of $1260,000. So today, Commissioners, the item before you is to approve the FY24 Budget Amendment Resolution to appropriate $19,716 in federal funds and to realign $7,964 in county funds for the Safe Streets for All Roads program, grant program. That concludes my presentation. I'm here with our Technical Service Division Director, Leland Dykes, to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Kim. Commissioner Kemp.
I just want to thank staff for moving forward with this. It's very desperately needed, this investment in safer streets in Hillsborough County, as I've noted many, many times before, sometimes from this day, sometimes others, that we are among the highest continually for pedestrian and bicycle deaths in the nation. So this improvement for safety in pedestrian and bicycle and transit is so very, very important. And I also like to acknowledge, she's retired now, but Beth Alden of the TPO, who really brought forward Vision Zero and I think created really good awareness in the community about this, this issue that we have for safety on our roads. And so I'll just recognize her too, because I know that's some of the first time I heard it, and where they started evaluating intersections. But thank to our staff so much, too, for focusing on this and bringing us what will be safer roads.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you. On page 15, it requires that we make sure and spend money in underserved communities, and I've been meeting with the leaders of Progress Village, and they have some, I went, I went out and drove around it, they have some pretty serious walkability challenges. You mentioned safety for schools, and I, the map went by quick. It looked like there was a big X in the middle of Progress Village, so is that a target site for you?
Yes, we have several projects in that area.
All right, thank you.
Motion approved. Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
B2.
Thank you. G2 is the next item. Jean Early will present this item. This is to provide core medical services for members of our enrolled Hillsborough County healthcare plan.
Good morning. I'm Jean Early from the Healthcare Services Department. B2 Agenda Item just requests approval for modifications to the HCP agreements with St. Joseph, Suncoast, Tampa Family Health Centers, and the TGH. And it provides our core medical services. It basically provides, including medical, dental, and behavioral health services, and this modification will extend the agreements for five years.
Questions, comments?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on B2.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thanks, Jean. Next item.
The next item is Item B3. This is to approve a resolution allocating funding to the United Food Bank and Services for Plant City, and Kevin Bricki will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget. B2 is asking you to approve a resolution and a funding agreement for the United Food Bank of Plant City in the amount of $450,000 as a contribution to their capital project, and also to release a previous lien related to a previous agreement. The project will demolish their current office and warehouse and distribution building and build a and build a larger one such that they may serve their current clients and indeed increase the number of clients that they serve for food-related needs.
Commissioner Owen.
Yes, and I thank you for your work on this. This was brought up by my predecessor, but this facility is just so critical to East and even South County for folks that are underprivileged and need the essence of life, which is food. So thank you for all your work on this. This new structure will really allow us to have a lot more food for a lot more people than needed. So I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Kemp, please accord your vote, and B3.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item.
The next item, two items are Commissioner Owen's items. First one is Item F1 regarding the Catch the Spirit and Celebrate America Fourth of July Festival at the Hillsborough County Fairgrounds.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and I'll be really fast with this because this was in your backups, but basically it requires a resolution anytime we need to put signs up in right of ways. For, I don't know if anyone has participated in the Brandon Fourth of July Parade, I'll invite you, it is the hottest and most miserable walk, but it's a great parade. And what we're trying to do now is to extend the celebration of the Fourth of July to the Hillsborough Fairgrounds. So we want to put the public on notice on where to go and what time. So I will move for approval on this. Thanks.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Owen.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Myers. No comments, please accord your vote, F1.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
F2.
Okay, F2, this is one that, I don't know if Commissioners, you remember when I got sick, when I was on the Change of Policy Committee, I think it was me, Commissioner Haggen, Commissioner Wolstall. And I'm certainly not trying to be a bah humbug person with proclamations in the boardroom. But my position then, and it is now, I actually thought this was mistakenly, I thought this was already done, is I just think sometimes these proclamations, along with the public comments, really get in the way of us doing the people's business. I do probably more proclamations, maybe me and Commissioner Myers than everybody else, but I do them outside of the boardroom. They just seem to take up a lot of time. Now, I want to also decipher that if this were to be approved, if the sentiment was the same with this board, that this would not include, like for example today, the Wade Boggs Award, awards that are part of the board that we give out as Hillsborough County. This would just have to do with an amendment to the actual proclamations that are Commissioner-driven and Commissioner-requested. So I move to approve an amendment to Rule 14 of the Board's Rules of Order, changing the current limit of proclamation accommodations to be presented in the boardroom from seven to three per Commissioner per calendar year. This does not impact proclamations or accommodations performed outside of the boardroom, and I will add that, and it also does not include any Hillsborough County awards that are given out by the board.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Wolstall, Commissioner Cohen.
So let me start off by telling you, I don't feel that strongly about this one way or the other, but I don't, I don't, I'm not inclined to support it, and I'll tell you why. I think that, first of all, our meetings happen to run really well, thanks to us having a very excellent chair. It's not like we're taking up a ton of time and can't get out of here as some other boards that shall remain nameless have experienced. I think we make a lot of tough decisions around here, we sometimes take unpopular positions, and I do think it's really nice that we can highlight some positive things in the community when we start out. And I just think people enjoy coming down. I thought that the presentations that we had today were a great example of the type of just really important public issues that Commissioners have the ability to highlight. And, you know, I'm inclined to leave it alone for the moment because I don't think it's broken, but that's just my thought.
Commissioner Wolstall.
I was trying to go meeting without having to say anything, but these proclamations have often timed in the past 18 months turn into a form of weaponization from other Commissioners to try and get very hot-button items onto the agenda that they know is not something unifying, like fighting fentanyl or supporting a child's baseball award. For that reason alone, because people couldn't act mature, I support zero, so if we can go from seven to three, I'm all in with you.
All right, I'm going to make a couple of comments, I don't know if anyone else wants to jump in. I got to, I guess, kind of like Commissioner Cohen, I'm torn on this. I'm not a proclamation guy, at least in the boardroom. I think everyone knows I like, I don't like long meetings. I do strongly believe in giving more proclamation accommodations in the public. I think you get more bang for the buck when you deliver something in person to a community meeting. All that being said, I think by and large, the new policy is working, at least, and Commissioner Cohen was very delicate with his comments, but I'm telling you, it's 10 times better than the previous policy under previous boards. Trust me on that. I did some numbers here. Today's our 12th meeting. We've presented 17 proclamations, accommodations, that's 1.41 per meeting. The last board, I can promise you, we averaged over three per meeting. There was one meeting with zero proclamations, there were eight meetings with one, three with two, and one with three. For example, with this new policy, well, first of all, there's two Commissioners that have already given more than three, and there's one that's presented three already. So those, they can't, I guess, present anymore. I'm willing to compromise.
Point of order on, just, it's for 2025. It wouldn't be for this year.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. I'm willing to compromise because I'm not, again, all about, I mean, I've given one so far. I mean, the least amount, myself and Commissioner Kemp's given one. So it's not like I'm out trying to look them for every meeting. I'm just not torn that three is the magic number. And I think we, I think if I remember correctly, we somewhat went around, discussed this when we had the committee, and I think you were at one of the meetings or two of the meetings, and I think I might have missed a meeting, and so I'm just really torn on it. And I'm willing to, I guess, compromise, but I don't know if three is a magic number, that's all I'm saying. Commissioner Cohen, are you back in the queue?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on what Commissioner Wolstall said. I totally agree with you 100%, but that's, I think we solved the problem already, because we said you have to have six signatures in order to have it happen in the room. And by doing that, I think we're, you know, really committed to only having things with broad consensus come in front of the board. Commissioner Haggen, I'd be happy to support a compromise. You want to split the baby at five, I think that would be perfect.
Commissioner Owen.
Yeah, and listen, I want this to be the sentiment of the board. You know, if you all feel strongly on another number, I will gladly support it. So I guess if maybe we could just hear from everybody, and I'll agree to amend my motion if I have to, but I'm certainly open to amending it. Again, my position on this is just to, you know, a lot of the folks show up, you know, they have to wait for the proclamations that are in public comments, and they're going to work and they have places to be, so they have to sit in the room or wait outside, so.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. I think the public enjoys coming here, to be able to take a picture with the board and receive a proclamation. And we made a major change, because I do agree with the Chair. Before, it was long during the public, all the proclamations and accommodations. Now we down to seven. It's a good number, we're in and out, you know. We tell the folks that are coming that we're going to recognize, hey, you only have two minutes. And most of them stick to that. So I'm not going to support the change. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp.
Yeah, I originally did the limitation to seven, and it was, some Commissioners were doing many, 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 and others were doing very few, and we were going over three per meeting and rarely went under that. And this is for the many years that I was here. And, you know, I, what'd you say, three seems a really dramatic change from seven. So I would support some kind of compromise as well.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda.
I'm okay in favor with the least amount, so that's me, but if the board chooses a different number, that's fine as well.
Yeah.
The least amount is fine.
Yep. All right, well, I know how to count to four, so I will amend my motion to limit the in-boardroom proclamations and accommodations to five.
You need a second.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Cohen, to reduce from seven to five starting next June 2025. Okay, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Myers, good and now.
All right. Good compromise. Bonnie, next item.
Very good. The next item is the staff report. This is Item G1. This is to receive a report from the County Administration and County Attorney's Office regarding agreements, changes regarding the University Area Community Center complex and transitioning that management over to the county. Ron Barton is here to present the item. Rick Valdez is here for any questions, and Ms. Beck can answer any legal questions as well.
Good morning, Ron.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christine, do you want me to just take it away? Okay. So you do have a report that we had been requested to prepare by Commissioner Myers, and the board acted on that request. So you've seen that report. My brief summary of it is, the bulk of the report gives you an assessment of the various agreements that are associated with the UACDC and the community center. It's not all agreements, it's about the community center activity. And also speaks to the question that Commissioner Myers and the board pose, which is potential transition of operations of the county-owned facility from UACDC to parks and rec. And so the bulk of the report addresses the various options associated with being able to transition. And in summary, they're either performance-based termination, which we don't necessarily recommend, we don't believe that there's elements associated with performance faults that would terminate. The second is basically to not fund the agreement, and that's well within your rights as the board. So it's basically a defunding of the agreement. In essence, terminates the agreement. The third is that both parties, the county and the UACDC, mutually agree to terminate the agreement. You would not be surprised that we recommend that we continue to pursue that option as the best option because it's the least adversarial. We obviously have no intent to do harm. The UACDC has been a great partner with the county. It's just, it was a long-term lease that we really want to see transition to parks and rec operations of the facility, and that's the objective. A couple of things as well in the conclusion of the report. If you accept the report, we will continue to have our conversations with Ms. Sarah Combs, the CEO of UACDC, again, to reach agreement on mutually terminating. And then what does that look like? Because there's life after the termination. Again, no intent to remove the UACDC from the facilities or anything like that, but we do need the replacement documents associated with it. The second is, obviously, they've been doing this for 25 years. The original request was to look at transition October 1. Our recommendation in the report is that we look at January 1, so the beginning of the calendar year at the earliest, in terms of that transition to parks and rec operation. And then lastly, the first meeting in August, so not too long from now, I would bring back with our collective team a letter of intent, an LOI. And basically, probably going to be a two-page bullet point that just says, here's what we're proposing it look like, and we need your concurrence, because the last thing we want to do is Christine's team, our team, to go negotiate and write documents for three months or four months, come back, and the board says, whoa, wait a minute, that wasn't what we were thinking. So two-page bullet LOI in the 1st of August. If you concur or you have changes to it, that will be the guidebook for us to do our documents with UACDC. That's my summary, and I'll answer any questions.
All right. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I want to thank the county attorney staff, and Ron, you and your team, for working this all out and bringing this forth to us, so therefore I'm going to move to receive the report.
Second.
Got a motion to receive by Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Owen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And when we spoke, I get the sentiment that we would like some type of amicable, you know, transition, because it will take time for our parks and everything to, I don't know if Rick wants to speak to that, or how much time would be needed for us to take over. But one of my big questions was legally, what position are we at as a board? Do we have the right to terminate immediately? And I think we do, but it's more, this is more about how do we transition more amicably rather than our legal rights? Is that kind of fair to say?
Yes, sir. We do have the full right to exercise the fiscal non-funding clause without penalty to the county. However, I think the suggestion is that there would be a better path to pursue by making it an amicable, mutually agreed-upon separation.
Okay, great. I don't want to hold you to what that looks like, but just I'm thinking monetarily-wise, with taxpayer dollars, if you can.
You will find out in August.
Okay, all right. That's fair enough. And Commissioner Myers, I know this impacts your district, so I'm going to probably go along with whatever you decide to do. Thanks for bringing this. Yep.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, Ron. Bonnie.
The next item is Item G2. This is to receive a report regarding an indoor sports facility and an outdoor sports complex. And Greg Horredell and John Mueller will present this item.
And I just want to point, I initially brought this forward, so after we hear from Greg and John, I'm going to make some comments. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Two feasibility analyses for potential sports tournament facilities were presented to the Board of County Commissioners on September 20, 2023. One study focused on an indoor sports facility for basketball and volleyball. The other was the potential for an outdoor sports facility for baseball, softball, and multipurpose field complex. The board requested staff to assess the viability of potential sites for each proposed sports facility and report back the findings. Staff has spent considerable amount of time looking at the reports and looking at potential sites. In summary, locations do exist within Hillsborough County where each facility could be located, assuming sufficient funding is available for property acquisition, site development, and facility construction. On the first one that we want to discuss is the outdoor sports facility, that is the baseball, softball, multipurpose field complex. The study estimated between 70 and 77 acres would be necessary for the desired complex. Development cost, excluding any land acquisition that might be necessary, ranged from $47.6 million to $53.9 million, with the larger number being associated with the larger complex. The staff analyzed three potential sites, two in East County and one in Northwest County. Two sites were eventually discarded simply because of the price tag and frankly, because of some wetland impacts or neighborhood impacts. One remaining site, which we are going to be careful not to disclose publicly, because there would be some land acquisition to make it the ideal site, and we wouldn't want to compromise the county's ability to negotiate with adjoining landowners. However, that's, land acquisition costs would range between $3 to $5 million. It's approximately 80 acres adjacent to our site. There is no acquisition cost, of course, for the county-owned property. And we did believe that the amount that the consultant projected for the construction of the fields was appropriate and within reason. Next, on the indoor sports facility, that was performed by Crossroads Consulting, approximately 180,000-square-foot facility for indoor sports related to volleyball and basketball. That facility cost was projected to be approximately $69.5 million, and the consultant identified four potential locations. We did not feel one of the locations. We did not feel one of the locations was viable, and I'll talk about that one in more general terms later, but the one that we discarded immediately was constructing a facility on top of a parking garage. We simply felt that there were just too many unknown costs and associated problems, potential problems with that particular location. However, there are three other sites. The first viable site is in East County, across the street from the tournament sports complex. There are no acquisition costs for that. Parking can be shared with our other facilities over there. We are planning for an emergency management warehouse to be constructed, and of course, that parking would also be available for that particular use. Second site is on the Mozy property. And as you recall, there was an RFP that was issued. We will be bringing back to you all, happily so, happily bringing back to you on the 20th of this month, our recommendation on selecting that site development consultant. We think, based on their proposal, that an indoor facility could serve as a hub for an entertainment complex on the site and add to what's already going on with Mozy, and would help support the hotels that would be on that site if everything comes to fruition according to that consultant's proposed development plan. More on that on the 20th. Would note that we already do own that site, so there's no additional acquisition costs. There could be some reduction in costs based upon some of the things that staff is thinking for how we structure that facility, shared parking, stormwater, and some use of existing facilities. The last remaining location is an undetermined or undesignated site in the West Shore area. We have had conversations with some of the hoteliers there. They have expressed a desire to explore a business improvement district or a tourist improvement district. We have not had substantive discussions with them, but the important part of that particular option is that there could be a sharing, cost-sharing, both on the capital side and on the operations and maintenance side. We have not quantified what their level of support would be, and I just want to be abundantly clear about that, but it is an intriguing option as we look at some of the potential sites in West Shore. So the estimated cost of that facility, as I mentioned, was $69.5 million. We would not know at this stage how much the private sector was willing to commit to it, and that frankly is part of what we believe some of the next steps would be. If the board were interested in moving forward on these projects, we would need to develop a viable capital plan for whichever site or sites the board wishes us to consider. So with that, John, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No. No comments to add. Greg covered everything, and look forward to your comments.
We are available for comments. Thank you. Or questions.
Thanks, Greg. You did a great job of summarizing a lot of information, and I'm going to make a few comments, and I got a couple of questions I want to ask Bonnie as well. Board members, as I stated in September, it was 11 years ago that I gave, I guess a little over 11 years ago now, I gave a presentation to the board on the benefits associated with multi-sport complexes. At that time, I specifically outlined three different ones: multi-sport outdoor complex, a baseball-softball complex, and an indoor gym or facility. I also highlighted the benefits associated with these facilities, notably the economic and sports tourism benefits. What I also stated at that time was that baseball-softball complex was my priority. Being a former player with a daughter that plays softball, you know, that's the route that I wanted to go, but Rob Higgins, Sports Commission, was emphatic that our multi-sport outdoor complex was our biggest need, and so I went in that direction. Several years and several BOCC votes later, we opened the tournament sportsplex in the fall of 2018, and it's gone on to shatter all of the consultant's projections, which I can tell you were fairly robust. They weren't conservative. And I point that out for a reason, is that projects like these do not happen overnight, and as we heard from Greg, they're not cheap. As was the case with the sportsplex, there were probably eight different BOCC votes along the way over several years before the board ultimately voted to approve the funding and then to approve the construction contract. This is our second discussion regarding potentially a second complex, and if we ultimately decide to pursue one or both, it will again be over a series of votes, extended period of time. That's not a bad thing, because when you're considering a project of this significance and cost, it's critically important that we're transparent and go above and beyond with our due diligence to ensure that the proper location and plan is determined. I stated in 2012, and I'll say it again today, that these facilities are revenue generators through visitor spending, room nights, and tourist taxes that are collected. I said that in 2012 because that's what the experts told me. I mean, I can tell you, after eight years of travel ball with my daughter, I can speak from experience, because I've seen it firsthand, and I've felt it in the pocketbook. These complexes are big business. And as I also pointed out during our last discussion, while we have not recovered our capital cost, from an operational standpoint, the tournament sportsplex pays for itself. And let's all be honest, how many government facilities can we say that about? So we took the first step to confirm the viability of both of these, and as the feasibility analysis indicated, our market is so strong that even with increased competition, which there is, that our strengths and opportunities present a real opportunity for the county to consider. And those were outlined during our last discussion. So based on that favorable analysis, the board asked staff to review the reports and evaluate specific potential locations, which is the basis of today's presentation. As Greg said, he almost said it verbatim, but in the report, it says, "In summary, locations exist within Hillsborough County where each facility could be located and successfully meet the requirements defined in the consultant's report, assuming sufficient funding is available for property acquisition, site development, and facility construction." Now, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I want to build both facilities. My vision 2012 was to build three world-class facilities. That hasn't changed. I'm confident both would be extremely successful. There's zero doubt in my mind. However, I recognize these facilities are not inexpensive, and we certainly need to balance projects like these with all of our needs. The reality is, while we have the potential locations, and our feasibility analysis states that they would be successful, both of these projects are a long way from being approved. They both, and Greg touched on this, they both have many unanswered questions and many moving parts, such as, you have potential to build one of these or more on county-owned land. We have potential for private sector support from both a construction and operational standpoint. So based on all that, I can't, and I don't think staff can with any certainty, say we're in a better position to go down one route or one road or the other. However, that is why I would like the board to continue moving forward with our due diligence, getting additional information on both. That will help us make an informed decision on, number one, whether to continue considering a facility, and, number two, which one we should pursue first. Again, we're a long way from approving funding or construction contract, but we should take the next step, and including in that is exploring potential P3 opportunities, such as we did in New Tampa with the Performing Arts Center, where the developer paid cash and made significant infrastructure improvements to make that project work. So closing here, I'm going to make a motion, which is essentially what's in the backup, but I do have a couple of questions I just want to get on the record from Bonnie, and I'm pretty sure I know the answers. At my request several years ago, the board, previous board approved, this is about funding, $2 million in BP dollars for an indoor complex. I know that we will likely have some capacity out of the first 3 cents and 6 cent in tourist tax revenues to potentially assist with these facilities. However, and this is a question, Bonnie, am I correct in assuming that even if we do have capacity to assist in one of these projects, it's not going to be nearly enough money to build? Is that a fair assumption?
That is true. It wouldn't be enough money to build one of them.
Right. Okay, that's. So recognizing this, and the fact that we still do not know if we will ultimately pursue one or the other, I'm assuming staff believes it would be wise to preserve the CIT as a possible funding source. That's fair to assume, isn't it?
Right, for the capital portion, exactly.
So I know, and I'm asking this for a reason, because I know right now you're in the midst of briefing board members on the CIT project list, and that list is fluid. So I'm going to ask you, and I could have done this in our private meeting, but I wanted to do it publicly, to add those onto the list, I'm assuming that the list is fluid, and other board members are giving you other examples, and that that's coming at the next meeting, correct, on 6/20?
Yes, on 6/20, we will be asking you to schedule the public hearing for July 17, but the list will be included in that request to schedule the public hearing.
All right, and then last question. That list is simply identifying projects that could be eligible for CIT funding over the next 15 years?
Yes.
So it doesn't mean that they're approved or anything like that, but it just means that they would be eligible, because we have to provide, it's for 15 years, correct?
Correct. CIT projects require a public hearing, so they would be permitted to be funded, but still the contracts and all the funding details, budgeting, all of that would still have to come back to the board for each project.
But it's not, again, I want to stress, even if it's on the list, it's not an approved project.
Correct. It would just be eligible.
Okay, so, and I fairly certainly knew the answers, though, I just wanted to make sure. So today, I'll pass the gavel to the vice chair, and the motion is essentially the next steps, that it's in the backup, just to authorize staff to begin discussions with property owners to assemble parcels for an outdoor baseball-softball multipurpose field sports complex in East County. Authorize staff to begin discussions with developers and local business owners to refine options for indoor basketball-volleyball sports facility, either on Mozy site or somewhere in West Shore. And then lastly, craft and bring back potential funding plan for one or both of the facilities. So that's the motion.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Hagan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cohen, and I know I'm in the queue, but since I have the gavel, I'm going to go ahead to Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for bringing this forth to us, keep us in front of us. But I would just like to say, when I had my meeting yesterday from staff, I liked the proposal of the Mozy site, of having the acquisition being in a walkable, everything that we would consider doing, from the hotel to the entertainment. I mean, when you think about bringing in an enclosure facility, I mean, it is cool outside right now, okay? You get my point. It's extremely hot. But if it's an indoor facility, where families could come in, right across adjacent from USF. I mean, this is going to be unique for our county. Chair Hagan, I want to support both, and I know you're going to put the list, you have a second to put the list in there for CIT. I think both will work, but I know in the future, we probably will narrow it down to one, and maybe the indoor facility might be the best or something to think about. And I also look at how close this is for proximity when we think of Mozy, and how we want to develop that project at Mozy. This would be a good, good fit for our county. I'll leave it there until we get more information to come back. Thank you, staff.
Commissioner Kemp.
And while I do appreciate these kinds of priorities to be put, you know, regarding an indoor sports facility and an outdoor sports complex, we, and I don't know it, I haven't seen the breakdown of the budget that it's been so, I'll take your word for it right now, that the soccer complex is totally paying its own way, but it hasn't paid for. The capital investment isn't being paid back, so there are real capital costs, and this is something like $110 million together, both of them in capital costs. I'll just say this, and seeing this on the CIT, I just feel as though there are continual misplaced priorities, and these are all wonderful things to have in the community, but when you're doing this, instead of fully funding our schools that are desperately needing that funding and making that a priority, and as well, our very, very underfunded transit system, and those needs that are really basic to the community, you know, I just, I see it as a misplaced priority. So I'll just add that.
Commissioner Hagan.
Thanks. And just in closing, I'll say, first of all, I understand Commissioner Kemp's concerns. They, I mean, they are valid, and that's why I think we definitely need to balance with all of our needs and try and find creative funding options when we can. And as I said previously, I'm torn on which facility to, I'd rather have. If you ask Rob Higgins, he'll tell you they're 1A and 1B, because I've asked him that, as far as which one is a greater need. And lastly, regarding Commissioner Myers' comment about Mozy, Greg will tell you this, when I originally brought forward Mozy discussion as far as putting out an RFP, that's what I said, it'd be a perfect location, and staff, I don't recall the reasons, it really doesn't matter, said, you know, probably not, and so we didn't specifically include it at the time. And now, for various reasons, I don't know if it's USF Stadium or the hotels, that may actually be the spot. So just wanted to point that out, but appreciate the board just taking the next step. Got a ways to go, and we'll see what information we can come back with.
Okay, great. And I'll just, I don't see anyone else in the queue, make a couple of comments. Now, you had referenced across the street from the sportsplex just for the indoor, correct? Why is that? Just because of the amount of space needed for the outdoor? I'm just trying to see the costs of acquiring land, you know, that seems beneficial.
You obviously have the existing tournament sportsplex site there, so you gain efficiencies there for operation, management, and shared parking.
Yeah. And I'm just curious, on the indoor, and I meant to talk to you about this, Greg, during our briefing, you know, don't we use the convention center for all those things, volleyball and basketball, whenever there's travel or things like that? Doesn't our convention center get converted a lot, and we utilize that? You know, is that not something that, is that taken into consideration, that we already have kind of that location to do those sports?
So I would say, according to the consultant's report, we don't have something of the magnitude that is being proposed here today. So if there were smaller events going on in the convention center, it isn't of the magnitude that they suggest our market could support.
Okay, good. Well, yeah, and I'm going to support moving it forward. Ultimately, I don't know where I'm going to land on this either. I think all the commissioners are in the same spot here, you know, especially when I do have a road called Lithia Pine Crest that I need to fund, and we got public safety. But I do think that, I do like the idea, obviously, of having this. I think it would be something that most counties don't have and become an economic powerhouse for our county, but at the same time, understanding that we may have some more critical needs that we need to address first, but I will be supporting, moving it forward, though. Thank you. So we got a, we got a, Cohen?
Yeah, I apologize. I was sparked to want to say something after listening to everyone. You know, Mr. Richards' presentation this morning about the medical, the biomedical district, and the way that it sprung up, really illustrates that you oftentimes don't know the way that different areas in the community are going to develop. And in both the area around the Mozy site and in West Shore, there's tremendous change afoot, and I think this is really about possibility. It's about keeping our options open to capitalize in places where there's huge investments being made already in hotels and in all kinds of amenities, and, you know, we've all worked in various capacities over the years on what's happened at the University Square Mall site. There's just so much activity, both in the Mozy area and West Shore, but, you know, perhaps in some of the other areas that are being looked at as well, we're going to see something really explode in the next few years. And I think that it's important to keep our options open about how we can be part of that. So for that reason alone, I think it's worth supporting, and, you know, keep our options open, keep our funding options open, recognizing that we have huge needs across the board, but that this may, you know, if done- but that this may, you know, if done correctly, may help us produce revenue rather than consume it.
Yeah, well said. All right, great. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan and a second by Commissioner Cohen. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioner Kemp, you will still vote in.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we please get a motion to receive the report as well?
Oh, okay.
So moved?
Second.
Motion to receive the report, Commissioner Owen, and then Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, guys. Bonnie?
The final item or future discussion items.
I got one. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is, what's going on right now throughout the country is a national credit card transaction fee litigation, and I just want to find out if we can be a part of that. In Hillsborough County, we use all these vendors, and so my future item is, I would like to ask the county attorney's office to explore the feasibility through an RFQ process of filing a claim and the national credit card transaction fee litigation to recover vendor fees the county has been charged over the past several years.
Sounds good. Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you. Mine is for the county attorney's office. Under the HART charter, the seats and designees are decided by population, and as of the 2020 census, Hillsborough County has been shorted one appointee, and I'm pretty sure it can be an appointee. Lord knows, we, the commissioners don't need any more boards to have to sit on. So if I would like to direct the county attorney's office to verify these claims and work with heart on the direction of designating one additional Hillsborough County appointee to the HART board.
Got that. Commissioner Cameron Tapete?
Yes, according to multiple news reports, as many as 400 people were involved in numerous fights at the Astro Skate parking lot in Brandon on May 18th, which was a Saturday night a couple of weeks ago. In addition to the fights that erupted, nearby businesses were vandalized, looted, or damaged. Damage was estimated to be several thousand dollars. Six adults and 30 juveniles were arrested for a variety of charges, including disorderly conduct, trespassing, and resisting arrest. Business owners in the area have said other late-night incidents have disrupted their businesses from time to time. They are concerned about potential for large numbers of unruly juveniles to fight again in the future if better security isn't implemented. I would like to know what circumstances led up to this event, and also would like to know what can be done to limit the possibility of these fights reoccurring. I would like staff to work with the sheriff's office to give a report on the fights and damage that have happened at Astro Skate and nearby businesses on Saturday, May 18th. In the report, indicate the causes of the fights and property damage, and importantly, it should say what is being done to improve security and what is being done by Astro Skate and other local businesses to improve security and prevent these types of events from occurring again. I would like to receive the report by the end of June. Thank you.
Got that? As much as you can?
Yes, because this is a sheriff's office, so the end of June, you know, we'll ask what we can, of course. We'll stress the importance.
Okay. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so we're adjourned.